All right, thank you. No, she should be at the seven o'clock.
How's everybody doing this evening?
All right, this one I want to say good evening. I'd like to open up the Ballpark City Council Special Meeting. Today's October the fourth, 2017. The time is five thirty-five. On the agenda before I open up and go into the roll call, we have on the items, the open session, which is the code enforcement organization, followed by the recess to closed session, which is the public employment conference of labor negotiation and real property negotiation as well, and with legal consultation mitigation. So, at this point, we will go ahead and have roll call.
Councilmember Cruz-Baca?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Arvada Pacheco?
Here.
Mayor President Susan Nubia?
She will be joining us at the seven o'clock. She's not coming in well.
Mayor Lazzano?
Present, all right. So, thank you very much. At this point, I will open up the public communication. Anyone who wishes to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Good evening. Yes, sir.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. Short comment on the code enforcement. I think the police department has been doing a fantastic job and keeping it legal, and we're not having problems and issues that officers are doing something that they shouldn't be doing by holding on to cars and trying to stop them and writing citations they shouldn't write. And I haven't heard any bad reports of any code enforcements that they've been doing illegally or anything like that. I think that the code enforcement has been handled 100 percent by the PD, and I think that they've been doing a tremendous job. And to do any kind of switching or anything else, I think would be devastating to the community. We would be stepping backwards. The other thing I'd like to comment on is the -- oh, there's the police chief. It's the police chief. You want to step outside a minute? Anyway, what I wanted to say with that, I'm a firm believer in keeping it in-house. I'm a firm believer that the officers know the officers within the house. I absolutely detest anything being a racial deal that an officer gets in or a police chief gets in because he's Latino. I want who's best for the job and who the men down below, the sixty or seventy officers, feel confident that he can lead. So whoever it should be, I don't want this to be a racial, and I don't want this to be a buddy deal. This thing should be the best qualified person to come in and do the job. So, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who should speak?
Talking about the police department, I think we should keep it in-house. Everything, I have forty years' experience in one company, okay? Everything within the house, okay? One of the things that we've found over the years and everything, if you keep it in-house, the one you put in there, the one that knows the areas. All the police department is, we're talking about twenty to thirty years, most of them?
Mm-hmm.
The top ones?
Yes.
They know what hot items are, where they are, who's a gangster, who's not a gangster, who can you trust to have their back, yeah? But on the code enforcement, they've been doing a beautiful job. The community, not only in my area, but of the Barnes area and everything, they are very capable of it, yeah? And that's one thing that we should keep it within the police department. They know what they're doing. They have the law background and everything. So, that's all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who should speak? If not, at this point, I will now declare the fall communication closed. So, the first item that we have on the agenda is the code enforcement organization. Okay, this one, who's doing a guest promo? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Vice City Councilor. We put together a brief presentation for you. This is in regards to an item that you requested a couple of months ago, regards to considering reorganization of the code enforcement division. So myself and our chief and our lieutenant, Hoffa here, are available for questions after the presentation here or during the presentation as well.
Can I just go just for a second, please? May I, councilmember? The reason that we've got Lieutenant Hoffa here is because he's actually been supervising code enforcement for over three years now. He's intimately knowledgeable when it comes to how to factual and specific information that you're going to read and make decisions. So, he's basically the code enforcement expert for this.
Thank you for that. All right.
The initial concerns that led to tonight's study session had to do with three things. My understanding, you're going to have to talk to our city manager, our chief executive officer. One of them had to do with the code enforcement division appearing to Melton under the police department because of the uniforms, the badges, and the approach that they were taking. Again, that was the allegation that I heard. Also alleged concerns from residents and business owners. But after staff assessed the situation, we didn't find any of these complaints substantiated. In fact, what we found out is that prior to the division coming over to police, they had uniforms that appeared to be more police-like with patches and so forth, more of a khaki look, and cargo pants, as opposed to after it went to PD. They went to polo shirts with khaki pants, and again, they do wear boots like a building inspector would for the field. And we also found no formal complaints about code enforcement staff from residents or businesses, as well as found out that code enforcement officers don't actually have badges. So, that's not something that they are able to present to anyone that asks for it, it's just business parties. The other thing, after getting to know the three code enforcement officers that we have, I found them to be very friendly and having a non-threatening demeanor. In fact, their approach appears to be very helpful to residents and probably to the business community. So I couldn't see how they could come across as anything other than friendly. And I'm sure once you get to know them, you'll find the same thing.
Gus, could I go back to the last step part of this?
Yes.
Just so you know, if you look at the two pictures that you have there, the picture on the left is prior to, and they had a badge back then, and they had the bloused cargo military-type pants, they actually put them in prison bloused men. When they came over to the police department, we changed their uniform standard to a more softer, but we put the pants on the outside of the shoes and no badge, so, just saying.
What is that on the side, on the side of the belt?
That's either mace for dogs. They do go in areas where there's animals that run after them, or they carry the radios there too. So, they have, they connect them to our radio system for help and communication if there's that issue.
So, looking at the positives, we looked at both sides of the situation here. The relevance, now, code enforcement works closely with planning and building, and that is a fact, since most of the issues concern land use, zoning, and unpermitted structures. Secondly, the name change, there's an opportunity to change the name of the division to one that's used by a lot of communities, which is either community improvement, community enhancement, neighborhood preservation, and so forth, in line with the goals of the community development department. However, that can also be done under the police department. Again, the name change, doesn't matter whether it's in one department or another, that could be something that the council does. Additional space to free up for the police department, currently, they've got an area where the officers sit, as well as administrative person. And again, that could be extra room for the police department for other functions. And also additional oversight. Now, when we had code enforcement under community development, there was a full-time lead supervising code enforcement officer. And that person had left shortly after moving over to PD. And so, that left the police department having to assign that task to their lieutenant. And from what I understand, they were already pretty heavily taxed for duties. As a result, there's less oversight than what code enforcement needs. But, again, that situation would be changed, come over to the community development. In both cases, here's a negative, we would be looking at having to unfreeze the code enforcement supervisor position to assist in managing those tasks. And in talking to our finance department, we're looking at a fully burdened cost of about a hundred thousand right now. And granted, that's before even doing a salary survey, because my understanding is that position right now is pretty low in comparison to what the code enforcement supervisor gets in the surrounding areas.
Excuse me, let me ask you, I don't mean to interrupt you, but was that a hundred thousand, was that worked into our budget, did we already approve?
No. Now, that's something that we have to consider for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
The other thing is, we don't have the office space right now set up for code enforcement to come up to community development. I know I've been talking with our chief executive officer about redoing the second floor. If it is needed, it's pretty obvious. The same thing with the third floor section where we're at, community development housing. So, we would need to develop that space. And I know that the police department had recently upgraded the downstairs to the point where I know the code enforcement officer positions are already nicely set up. The other thing, the negative to this, is the public perception regarding the date of the violations. Now, I've spoken to several staff members, and there's residents that have also offered their opinion on the situation. And ultimately, the perception is that if for some reason they were under community development, that they would be subjected in terms of who to enforce and who not to. Well, I got to tell you, whether it happens with police or community development, community development would enforce regardless, we would not be subjected. So if we were approached by someone to say, hey, ignore that violation, but go after this one, I'd have to say no to that, because we either are reactive or we're proactive. Meaning, if we're reactive and the council takes a policy to say the department is going to be reacting to that, you have to submit a formal complaint for us to go after them. If we're proactive, that means whatever we see out there is fair game, so we go after it. And right now, my understanding is that the city wants to be proactive. You want to be able to address things even without a complaint. And then the third thing is the impact on the community development drive now, because we do have three divisions that I've seen currently have minimal staff levels, we're at a skeleton group. So adding another division to that, again, I think would impact us. However, with that lead code enforcement officer, that would help alleviate that. This is the comparison we did, we went ahead and surveyed cities in the San Yves Valley. Now, we eliminated the cities under thirty thousand square feet, like Bradbury, for instance, Irwindale, South Pasadena. So the ones that you see here are the ones that are more comparable to us. And then if you look at the average of officers per population, it's about one for twenty-one thousand three ninety-six. And if you look at Baldwin Park, that's about right, we're one for twenty-five thousand seven forty-eight. So having three full-time officers currently works and is within that. But again, needing that lead code enforcement officer is very important as well. And you look at, what we did is we saw where are these divisions located? Well, one of them is in the administrative services department with the city manager, that's Alhambra. But the majority of them are in community development departments. And then, of course, you have the ones within the police departments as well. And that gives you an idea, again, of the population, number of officers, and also the administrative health. I believe that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions? The chief and myself, I'll leave it at that side.
Who's your next question? Yeah, I wanted to ask how we are tracking the cases that are opened and closed in the department? How do we track that currently?
Yes, it's all tractable in the software system that they currently use.
Which is what? What is it called?
Government outreach by Excel, is what it produces it. I believe Tyler, the new software is going to have a code enforcement option that we're moving to. And I, since that's not up and running yet, I don't have any experience in tracking the system. The current system is not.
So, the current system is what now?
Government outreach.
Government outreach. And how long have we been using that?
They've been using that longer than the government system, but I don't know exactly how long they've been using it.
Okay. So, and then the other is Tyler?
Tyler's the new software, it's going to be installed soon.
Okay. And so Tyler is going to be citywide.
Tyler, right. Building and safety and planning are moving to the Tyler system. It's also the same system that finance has just moved to. And that system, I understand, will also have a module that code enforcement can then go on, and they will all be on the same system and be able to interact and talk to each other.
So, I mean, I think what would help me, because when I look at this, I mean, this is good information, and it just, I understand about like the space requirements and, but when I look at the community, I see that there has been an increase of what looks like code enforcement violations. So, you know, lawns, like the color of homes, just, you know, a number. I've passed by, I mean, Shannon, I've passed by with you and have seen fences that were, you know, kind of falling apart, crumbling, and so it has, for me, it feels like it's become a greater issue in our community. And so, when I see this information, it's good, but I also want to understand, okay, we're investing this amount of money into that operation, it's, you know, this amount of staff, you know, comparatively to other cities, it looks, it looks like we're about, we're about right. Maybe, maybe we have, we're a little understaffed, you know, by these numbers. But I want to be able to see, like, you know, usually there's like a return on investment. When you, when you invest in a certain operation, you want to see what is the return on that. And I don't think that we've really seen anything to quantify the activity of code enforcement, because I know that some have mentioned on this council that there were concerns about the, you know, attire. For me, it's been more of the appearance of our community. And so, you know, I'd like to see more of a report. Same thing with the police department, like I've asked for, like a comstat, you know, where other police departments have, you know, been able to implement a type of comstat where you can show these are the different incidents that are occurring in the communities. And so you can, you know, you can quantify it, you can provide a description, you can see how we're addressing it, you know, through patrols. No different with code enforcement. So, to see how many complaints are we receiving, or how many cases are open, how many of those are being closed on a, you know, whatever the interval is, whether it's weekly or monthly or quarterly, whatever it takes, the amount of time that it takes to, you know, to close these cases. But it would be nice to have that side, so that we can really look at how effective, you know, how effective is this department being, whether it's under the police department or whether it's under community development? I mean, when I look at this, I see that the majority of cities do have this operation under community development. And Gus, you mentioned it's because of the connection with the land use. Absolutely. You know, there are conditions of approval, and if there is a landscape, I've had a call, Amy Harvin, in the past, about some developments that let their landscape go. And so, Amy, you know, what are the conditions of approval for that project? So this is where there, there is that nexus. But, you know, I'd be perfectly fine keeping it under the police department, but I just want to see what is the activity, you know, and what are the results? So I don't think we've really been able to measure that.
Mayor?
I think we can probably run some reports like that, you just have that.
Mr. Biden?
Yeah, and have some type of a workshop and maybe, you know, and maybe, and here we go again, I always believe in community involvement. And see if maybe we could ask, whether the seniors or the senior center, and ask them, what do you feel? And I know that there's a couple of churches that have recently gone out to help with beautifying Baldwin Park is the best way that I can put it. I was involved in the one a week ago, Saturday. And we took care of, I didn't, I was just in one house, but there were sixty houses that they took care of, and the pictures before and after were phenomenal. And a lot of the people, lots of times when you go by someone's house, you assume that that person's lazy or just doesn't want to do it. The house that we cleaned up, and Vice Mayor Rubio was with me, the lady has terminal cancer, and she was embarrassed to ask somebody to come and help her. So there were about eight of us, that not only did they mow her lawn, but we cleaned her patio, we brought in some plants, and it was unbelievable, the before and after. It wasn't, it didn't even look like the same house. So I know that there's a lot of seniors and a lot of people that are not able to do it. And I think that that's one thing that we need to reach out as well, maybe through the churches, and say, you know, we need to do this program a little more often to sort of help the city as well. It's not just our staff's responsibility, I think that it's everybody as residents' responsibility to clean Baldwin Park. I know West Covina has a committee, beautify West Covina, what is it? Beautiful West Covina or?
West Covina Beautiful.
That one. And, but we don't have that here in Baldwin Park. We just sort of leave it up to the residents or whatever they say. But I would, I would like to see something like that, you know, where we get volunteers, you know, to work with our staff.
Well, it's councilmember.
What I'd like to emphasize on is, what are some of the areas, where is your staff clearly emphasizing? And what are some of the things that you're doing to kind of improve the image of the city? You look at all that one. What are some of the successes of enforcement that you're trying to accomplish? So, for example, if I drive around the city, there's a lot of homes that I see that are dilapidated, some businesses, brush is overgrown, fences are broken down, windows are broken, that sort of thing. What are we doing to focus on the homes that are more deteriorated than the one next door? I'll get a lot of complaints sometimes, code enforcement will go to a house, and maybe they don't have that permit for the patio they built in the back. But the house is impeccable, very nice looking house, and the next door, it's a home that's dilapidated, overgrown, you know, like nobody's lived there for years, there's cars in the back. And so the red is going to ask you, why would you come to my house and not the house next door? I mean, it's a very common complaint that I get. And so I think we need to look at code enforcement to see where are you going to emphasize more to clean up the city? I mean, you could drive around pretty much with anybody on staff, I could drive with you, and show you a lot of the places that are dilapidated that need improvements on, you know, that we need to work on. And so, I need to see a program that staff could bring about to say, look, this is how we're going to tackle it, this is what we're trying to do to improve it. Now, among that, when you find that it's a senior home that needs fixing up, or someone with low income who needs some help, then maybe within the program, it may already be, but I don't know, but maybe we could say, okay, here's a constituent that's a senior that has cancer or is ill or something and needs help, that's why his home is the way it is. So what program can we develop through the churches or what have you, other organizations that could come in and help that home? But then there's other homes that are just rented, because I think there's a large percentage of rentals in the community. How do we get that owner to come up and keep this, his home up? Now, what might happen was he may clean up the house and not start to raise the rent. So we're going to have to kind of somehow find a way to deal with those sort of issues that would come about when we're trying to manage code enforcement, you know, out of the community. But I definitely need to see, you know, I mean, I appreciate that so far the police department has done a good job in at least, you know, proactively getting everyone together, having staff and monitoring them, but now that we need to go to the next step, what we're looking at, how can we improve the city? What areas do we want to emphasize on? And I think it's, it's homes that are just literally totally dilapidated, have cars in the front yards, overgrown grass, there's a lot of that going on, as opposed to a home that has Christmas lights, but it's a nice house, and they're getting ticketed because they got a Christmas light. I mean, just, it's not rewarding that, that person who really has a, you know, a very nice yard, and it will finalize them only because they got a Christmas light, you have to cross the street, it's just, it's devastating. There's a lot of businesses that are sitting there, titled, you know, that look terrible, especially on the freeway in the right by where that Seven-Eleven is, where Fraser Street ends, right around the corner there where the billboards are, you know, there's, there's two properties there that have been there for years, dilapidated, but somebody could come in there, maybe develop it, or get on the owner to try to fix it up, maybe that'll make him want to sell that, that property, I don't know. But those are the areas, I think the next step, it's not so much, do you fit better in the PD or do you fit better under, you know, I mean, community gotten? I mean, I don't know yet, I'm still trying to assess that. But right now, what I do know is that the program under, under the police department that you're doing now, you need to have more emphasis on where you're going to focus on so that we could see the improvement over the next, you know, say, three months, six months, nine, nine months in a year. So we need to be able to gauge better, you know, what we're doing, and if our programs developed, you know, can we do that? And maybe that's the next workshop you do in about, you know, maybe two months, maybe, because I would say, I think you need to get with your staff, you guys need to come up with these programs, you see what are your strengths and weaknesses, and what can you do to better it? And looking at some of the areas that we really do, divided areas that we need to focus on, and come up with that plan to do that. And that's kind of the next direction that I see that you should all be moving to.
And I think that what would help, and I agree with both councilmember Pacheco and Monica, I think that what would help is to start dividing the city into sections. Let's say you tackle the north side, the east-north side, let's just say, by the Olive Pit is the best way I can explain it. And then you take the section which is on the other side of Main Street, on the west side. Yes, and just, just go section by section and sort of do it that way, so that that way we know, okay, section number one will be taken care of from this time to this time, section number two, this is this way. Sort of like when they do the streets, when they redo the streets and stuff, there's a map that shows us, oh, these streets are going to be taken care of probably during these months or whatever it is. I think that that would sort of help as well, and sort of, I guess, and I will, I will reiterate, is to bring in the assistance of the, of the residents and the businesses that will tell you, you know, this needs to be cleaned up, because we can't be everywhere. I mean, I drive around Baldwin Park a lot. However, you know, there's a lot of areas that I probably haven't driven in a long time, which is over by Kaiser, because I very seldom drive over there. So, you know, I think that that way we could sort of combat it together and do like an effort, a collective effort with everybody.
Mayor? Oh, go ahead.
I guess what I'd like to see is maybe you break down the residential areas into rentals, maybe bank-owned residences, low-income, and then just other residents. And if it's bank-owned, how can you really push the bank to not let the house get dilapidated? The rental units, can we have programs or work with the owners so that they can make a better program? You know, so that we can work with them to improve the look of the rental. You know, low-income programs, I don't know, if somebody just doesn't have the money, you know, to do it? Do we have, can we sit down with them and say, okay, these are some loans that you can get? Maybe we need to develop silent seconds to help them through it. Because look, you're really looking at roofing, painting the house, the exterior of the home, you know, the outside, and you know, that's what's inside, the landscaping, you know, those are the elements that when you look at a house, that's really what you're looking at, you know, that goes out of bounds. I don't know, maybe we, if they go draw a tolerance, we give them a loan for that. Just kind of develop different programs. I don't know, if we have, I think some of our housing facilities come back, and I don't know, can we do more silent seconds that would be helpful?
Those are a part, sir, of what you're referring to. Very one-home programs for community development, and you're talking about rental registration programs. Those do keep people accountable for maintaining their properties. I know the city here is probably not too fond of homeowner associations, but I can tell you that cities that have adopted homeowner associations, when new development comes in, they don't have an issue with landscaping.
That's correct.
Or property maintenance. I know it's a cost, but ultimately you have people that rent out their properties, and all of a sudden they become a bit of a slumlord. They don't, they don't give credit back to the renter either. Neighborhood improvement zones, like you had mentioned, yes, I remember Azusa doing those a while back.
Yes.
They went neighborhood by neighborhood, by little cleaning it up, and developing volunteers to take care of each of those zones. So now people feel proud about, hey, I want my neighborhood to do better than yours, so I'm going to go ahead and be active.
Exactly.
Well, and it takes a city partnership with them too, because if there are some infrastructure needs, then it brings it to our attention, you know, and we can start to think about the capital improvements for that neighborhood. So I think it's absolutely the way that we need to go. And I, I agree with you that we need to get a better understanding of kind of the categories that exist in the community. And so maybe what we can do is ask for a report of this government outreach to see, as it stands today, what, what are the bulk of the cases? Or, you know, just give us some, some, some way to quantify what's happening in the community so that we can understand what's taking up the majority of the time.
It's more property maintenance versus unpermitted construction.
What is it? Yeah, we have no, we have no sense right now. I mean, I can just kind of anecdotally look at across the community, but this way we understand what our staff is dealing with day in and day out, and, you know, coupled with this And, you know, coupled with this type of information, then we can see where are the holes, you know, what, where are the voids? Where can we plan for next year to support the staff, so that they can be efficient and they can execute, based on the priorities, like you say? Because, you know, you can't tackle everything in the community, but with us understanding more of, you know, these cases and what's going on out there, the trends, the patterns.
Right, and I think in addition to that, it just, you know, this software program that you have, I'm sure has some sort of, you know, overview or some sort of management reports that you can come out of there. Maybe we need to look at that to get a better feel for, you know, as the councilwoman said, is, you know, what can we emphasize more? Or maybe you're emphasizing more in an area that we may not want you to do that, maybe focus more on residents in a certain way. But I know in saying that, when you, when you start doing code enforcement on your residents, you're going to run across people that are ill, people that are, that don't have the resources to maintain their house, property owners that just don't care and aren't going to, you know, improve the property and those sorts of things. So, I think we need to sit down and look at the big picture and try to see how we can help improve each situation. Because you're going to run across categories, and those people are going to start coming to councilmembers and say, look, you know, I can't, you know, it's my grandma's house, and I came here to help her, and code enforcement's giving her hundreds of tickets, and how do we resolve this, right? And so, we need to be able to kind of foresee that before it comes, and see how, you know, what programs can we do, you know, to help guide you, if that's the case. Otherwise, if there's residents that just have the resources, but aren't doing, you know, aren't taking care of their property, you know, then maybe that's where we emphasize, you know, citing them and that sort of thing. But after we do that assessment, I think we need to look at doing some kind of outreach on the community and tell them, we're looking at code enforcement, we're trying to improve our community in this citywide, we're going to come out. I think there needs to be an outreach to explain what we're doing. We're not just penalizing them, but we're trying to improve the community and get that message.
And I think that Irwindale, I use Irwindale as an example, because I know that you work there. Irwindale has always been very aggressive, and I know that there's only sixteen hundred residents. But they've been very aggressive in coming up with grants to be able to, so that people can keep their homes up, especially those that are, that came in with affordable housing. So, that that way it gives them an incentive to be able to keep up their yards and their houses in the paint, or whatever. So, maybe there's something like that, that we could look into, some type of grants, where, you know, people could apply, or we could apply it to some of these repairs and so forth, that have to be done.
I remember a while back, there was a neighborhood revitalization grant that helped remove a band-aid. I think those are coming back, because ultimately, redevelopment going away, you know, we can definitely look at doing that for the neighborhoods that are dilapidated.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you.
Let me just say, I think that everyone's opinion here is good, we need to just make sure we move on. So, the next meeting, or let's figure out another study session. Let's bring, let's look at the data that this software produces, so we could look at it. So, this way, from there, let's see if it's something that's, that's current, or maybe it's, it's updated. We need to get some better software, but we should be able to look at that and kind of manipulate it and see it. Now, you know, for years, for years, I've asked over and over about the code enforcement, about some of the properties. I mean, you could go right through the street and tell them, say, if I'm seeing it, why aren't they seeing it? Okay, so, that's an issue with me, and it has been. I'll tell you one of the ones that for the longest time, go north on Main Street, Main Street and Los Angeles to the left, across the street from that seven eleven. That home, I don't know if it's owners or renters, whatever the case may be, but I mean, it just, it's a, it's a bad image for the city. And so, somehow, we need to prioritize, especially the businesses. For a long time, that one other business establishment, strip mall, Ramona, and is it Barnes? I think it Barnes area, you know, in other words, let's get these people to paint them. You know, let's, let's, let them know. And a good portion of these are renters, and we need to go after those renters. Covina, West Covina, Irwindale, Armani would not tolerate that. We shouldn't stand, we shouldn't stand for the same thing. So, somehow, we need to do an aggressive type of, 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 um, position where we're going, where, and then go, let people know that if you are the rent, you're renting, or owners, go after those owners. I know three of them, I won't mention here now. Guy lives up there in Pasadena, Hastings Ranch, and I've been in contact with him, and he simply said he didn't care, he's not going to improve his property. Three homes in Baldwin Park that are totally dilapidated, of which I will report and probably make it public, which is what I told him, we didn't address the actual issue itself. I didn't mean to point at you. So, so that's very important for us, to be able to address those. I mean, for the longest time, I've been, you know, the same thing over and over. We shouldn't have homes with vehicles in the front yard, you know, I mean, there's so many of them throughout the city. Yes, and, and if we're seeing it, I mean, why is the code enforcement not seeing them? Or, or maybe they have been, and we need to see that data to find out if in fact, they have cited them, and let's look at the pictures. But let's bring that software, and let's see what the software, what results are there, and then the detail that's on there.
How soon are you going to have that software up online?
Tyler, probably in the, you know, like, next year. But I think the current system will be able to get some statistics.
G I S is going to help tremendously with that.
Now, is this an older program than we've had for a while, or?
Yes.
About how does that suck?
At least as long as they do a PD. I don't know how many years before as well.
But it does have reporting mechanisms or reporting?
Yes.
They've been with us now for over three years.
Do we pay an annual service fee for them?
Yes.
We do. So, they probably update it, so that at least, you know, some minimal, minimal reports can be generated, things like that.
If I remember correctly, I think Rose gave us an update a while back about how much was paid to them. I think it's a yearly fee, right? Yeah, I think, I think Rose had told us when we were going to switch to the new system, she had talked about the pros and cons of having, you know, what, why we need to update everything.
Not a curiosity. Is that the one you guys were talking about, about updating a specific one? You guys have just mentioned some name, no?
Yes, well, they're updating to Tyler.
Yeah, the new system is Tyler. Tyler, finance has already gone on to it, and then building and planning are already in that process.
What does Covina and West Covina have? You guys know?
West Covina has an older system of Excela, which is similar to what they're using now. It's actually probably, probably even more outdated.
I mean, somehow, we have to move on this, including businesses that ninety-five percent of the front, uh, uh, of windows are just tagged up with their, their advertisement. I mean, things like that, I mean, they make a big difference. So, somehow, we got to, right here in Maine, as an example, we need to do that. All right, well, that's enough.
Mayor, just real fast, when Mark Castenola was still here, I remember him mentioning that he had been working on a grant to be able to fix the facades. He was going to start with Main Street and then eventually going to Ramona, where I don't even, I don't even know if that grant is still available. I'm sure it's not, because it's been several years, or there might be something else. Where there was something to give the owner of the properties, or the businesses, an incentive to come up with half of the money, and the grant would pay for the other half, and that would have included those awnings and so forth, like they have in Monrovia. But it was never followed through, so.
I'm familiar with the shot improvement grants. That is something that went away for a while, but we do see it, that's something that's coming back.
Because I know that Monrovia and downtown Covina have used something similar to, to sort of update their, and remodel their facades.
There's also something years ago, I don't know if you remember, Paramore, they did a white picket fence grant, or it wasn't just for the picket fences, but also for the people's front yards.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, yes, sir.
Can I say one thing?
Oh, no, no, we can't right now.
Well, just to help in this community, thank you.
Let's do it after, let's do it after. Actually, bring it up at the, at the main one, when you have the public.
Well, it's retained here.
I, I gotta move on. All right, sorry about that. All right, so, at this point, we're going to go ahead and...
Also, did we make a motion? Did we decide what we're going to do? What is?
Yeah, I mean.
No?
Well, I think we got the direction to bring back this report with the statistics, I don't know, in the next meeting or...
Could we do it like in the next month or so? I think in two weeks, it's a little pushing, don't you think? For two weeks, I think maybe the first meeting in November? Yeah, the first meeting in November. Thank you.
All right, so, at this point, do we need a motion? Okay, direction, all right. All right, the direction's big. All right, so, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it, gentlemen. All right, so, the next one that we have, we're going to go into closed session, so we're going to have to beg you.